Everyone, please, exercise meeting protocol.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
On second, approving the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just so we know here that Mike Lacoste, am I saying that right?
Lacoste.
Lacoste is, has requested to be on the agenda to discuss more of the ongoing conver- conversation of constitutional county. So it's his floor for the period of time that he needs, and then if there's time afterwards, we'll certainly take comments from public. Mike, you're up.
Well, first, before I start anything, I'd like to address how many, in a raise of hands, how many believe in the principles of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. Well, that being said, first, we'd like to thank the Bremer County Board of Supervisors for allowing Gary Schauer, Dr. Merle Kinnon, and I to be on the agenda today to allow us to clarify the Constitution county concept that we previously presented to the board on August 23rd, 2021. We believe that during that past year, there has been many infringements on our rights that are completely unconstitutional to include, but not limited to, unconstitutional mask mandates, the shutting down of churches, and the restricting of nonessential businesses. The constitutions of the state of Iowa and the constitution of the federal government are constitutions that are in place all the time, and they are not done away with in times of pandemics or national crises. Two counties in Nevada solved problems that arose from last, the past year's crisis, and passed a constitutional county concept in a resolution. In May of this year, and within the last month, another county in New York State did the same. What is a constitutional county? It is simply a county where supervisors pass a resolution that assures that the Bill of Rights, as outlined in our state and federal constitution, will be upheld by the sheriff and the board of supervisors regardless of any unlawful executive orders and unlawful regulations that may be implemented. The sheriff actually has the power to do this on his own authority, but the supervisors passing a resolution is simply a way of letting both the state and the federal governments, as well as the citizens of Bremer County, know that they will be guaranteed their citizens' right regardless of any unlawful orders or regulations. The sheriff can assert on his own that a regulation or executive order is unconstitutional. It is important to remember that the states give the power to the federal government, not the other way around. This is what the Tenth Amendment to the Constitution is all about. In three counties in this country that have passed a constitutional regulation, there has been only one vote by a supervisor against this. Realize also, this is not, and I repeat, not, a political issue. It is a liberty issue. It is for all religions, all political affiliations, all races, it is for everyone. We have copies of articles that appeared in the Epoch Times, over to my left, newspaper that are very well outlining what transpired in these counties in the passage of these resolutions, and we will make these copies available to anyone who wishes a copy, providing we have enough. We will try to answer any questions that we can to completely clarify the Constitution county concept. We have gone through every question that was asked on the video of the supervisor's weekly meeting dated September 7th, 2021, and I've tried to our best ability to answer each and every one. We would appreciate an opportunity for us to do so, but before we take any questions, since the constitutional county concept is the dependent on the sheriff upholding his oath of office, we would like Sheriff Pickett to give us his view of the constitutional county concept and how he feels about this concept. But before Sheriff Pickett does this, we got a four-minute clip on the sheriff's duties and responsible for us citizens. We'd like to play that right now, will you?
Please.
The sheriff is your most important ally in the securing of your rights, because your sheriff is not a hireling of the state, not a hireling of your county. Your sheriff is a constitutionally-elected representative of the people. It is his duty by oath to secure your rights. It is not his duty to blindly enforce the law. If there is one office that you can take back control of to secure your rights, it's this one, because your sheriff is the highest authority in your county. Your sheriff has an authority to deny enforcement of laws, state or federal or local, that do not secure your rights or were contrary to your rights. This is Sheriff Brad Rogers from Elkhart, Indiana. He stood up to the federal government. He got sick and tired of the federal government, the FDA and the USDA coming in and raiding his Amish farmers in the middle of the night trying to seize their weapons of mass destruction. You know, raw milk and cheese. He wrote a letter to the FDA and the USDA and told them that if they stepped in his county one more time without first coming to him and seeking his permission, that those agencies would have to come bail their agents out of jail because he was going to arrest them for trespass. And since the day of that letter, they have never had another problem with the USDA or the FDA, because the federal government knows the sheriff is the highest authority in the county. That's why they're always trying to co-opt them. That's why your sheriff's departments are always being offered free toys and training and mutual jurisdiction agreements and, ooh, we'll let you wear our badge if you let us wear yours. It's bribery, extortion, it's trickery, for the sheriff to relinquish his authority to a lower power. Because you realize, your elected representatives will do a lot of things when you're not looking, right? But they will never do what you want them to do. They will never do what you really need them to do, not to provide you with welfare and homes and healthcare, but to provide you with the security, the ability to secure your own rights. They will never do that unless you expect it and you demand it. He says some bloggers and natural food writers have hailed me as a hero. I'm no hero, I'm just doing my job. Remember, his job is not to blindly enforce the law, his job is to secure your rights. Whether you are a conservative or a liberal, I will be a guardian of the Constitution for you. I will not stand idly by while the rights of my county are trampled, whether by criminals or an overreaching government. And we have learned today, an overreaching government is breaking the supreme law of the land which makes them criminals. That is the power of your sheriff. And that ought to be the statement of every sheriff. And if it's not the statement of your sheriff, you need a new sheriff.
That video was based on a constitutional attorney, her name is Chris Anne Paul. There's a pamphlet up here, she's got her website, feel free to get any of these bad pamphlets up here. So with that, I'd like to have Sheriff Dan Pickett come up and have a few words.
Thank you, and I want to assure everybody, no matter where we go with this, you still, I will protect you. The Bill of Rights will be, when I took oath of office, you know, I have to uphold the Constitution and uphold everybody's Bill of Rights. And, you know, I like the concept, I didn't realize, I guess, that the sheriff had that much power. Things aren't going to change in our office, one way or another, we still will do our job, do the best we can. And I don't, I mean, we haven't really had a need for help from outside agencies, other than we do need backup periodically, but for the most part, we want to make sure that your, your rights are protected, and we will do that, just like your firearms rights, you know, under the Second Amendment, right? There's been a lot of questions, and I think some of the questions that were asked at the last meeting hopefully could be answered, because I think a lot of it, you know, come about and, and we didn't know those answers. Does anybody have any questions for me as to what this is all about? Steve?
Yeah, I've got a couple here, Dan, I just want to, you, you said that you didn't realize you had that much authority. You've had training in law enforcement.
Right.
You've, you know, been in law enforcement for a long time. Is it your understanding that you have the authority to determine whether laws, orders entered at the state and the federal level? You have, you have the job of determining whether those are really, in your opinion, legal, and if they're not, you don't have to enforce them. Is that your understanding of your job?
It's my understanding, if that would come to that, I would check, obviously, with our county attorney to determine if that is the right way. I, I know we had mask mandates, I think we did it for everybody's protection back last year. I, I guess I didn't realize that if something come down from the state that I didn't like, that I could say, no, we're not going to do it. But apparently, under the Constitution, there's certain things of the way it's written that you can.
Based on what they're saying, their authority, that junk they've got in that brochure, that, that's the only one I've ever heard say that in law school, and twenty, forty years of practicing law, and twenty-three years as a judge, I've never heard that expressed before, but you're thinking now that's the way it is?
I'm not sure, I have-
You stand above everybody?
Okay, we didn't, we're not into the argumentative-
No, no, you're kidding, I'm asking to clarify, I just want to clarify where Dan stands on this. Do it.
You, you can clarify that with Dan later, so.
Oh, really?
Do you have anything else to say, Dan?
I just, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we leave here today, we're going to do our job, just as we've done before, it's not going to be done any different, my deputies and myself, obviously, I have, you know, several employees with the, between deputies, jailers, and dispatchers, and, you know, when we take calls, we don't ask, you know, a lot of questions, other than we get to the basics of the call. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that no matter what, and we will uphold the Constitution, we will uphold your Bill of Rights.
And that's all that this is saying?
Right, that's what I'm-
Uphold the Constitution, do you believe in the Constitution? You all raised your hand, do you, and the Bill of Rights? That's what I'm asking. If you do, this should, this is a no-brainer.
No, this is, this is factually inaccurate. The state constitution creates counties, and counties create sheriffs. There is, there is no, there's nothing in the state of Iowa constitution that mentions the word sheriff. I mean, this is, this is fantasy.
Did, did the, did the states create and write the Constitution? Because there was no federal government at that point in time.
I don't know what point in time you're talking about.
The very beginning of our country. Did the states write and sign the Constitution?
They ratified the Constitution, the people-
Who wrote it?
Who wrote it?
Yeah, because the federal government was not made yet.
James Madison wrote the Constitution.
Okay, so the people and the states ratified it.
I'm not following your point.
There was no federal government before the states made a federal government, therefore, the states are in control of the federal government. Yes, they did, yes, they did.
Yes, they did.
Yes, they did. The people, the states, the federal government. There was no federal government. The mandates are laws, and the sheriff doesn't have to enforce them. I obviously know exactly what I'm talking about. Don't, no, no, don't insult my level of education.
Okay, let's not get into-
I know what I'm talking about.
Let's not get into that.
You don't have to talk like that, condescending.
There's no reason to argue, everybody has their view, everybody has an opinion, and that's why we're here today, to hear other people's feelings, other people's views on this, okay?
There's a difference between an informed opinion and an uninformed.
And you're just obviously informed, isn't he?
It's still an opinion, and people have the right to speak it, and that's partly, sir, why people are here, upset, because when we take away people's right to speak, that they get frustrated and upset, and all the, the, the words that come along with that. So let them speak, don't try to talk over everybody, let's keep it peaceful, let's keep it, and we can go around the room, but honestly, Mike still has the floor, this is open for public debate. He's the one that asked to be on the agenda, when he's done, if he has time, he can yield, and we can hear from everybody else, but until such time that he's done, we're going to hear from him and his people and his staff.
The sheriff asked if there were questions.
I did ask that.
And then it became quickly an attack of the junk that's on the table, and that wasn't a question, sir, that was an attack. Let's just hear, this is just an informational session, we're not here to make a decision on anything, we're here to hear the facts, or, and then we have to sort out whether or not it's facts that we heard, but let's not get into, we're all friends and neighbors, let's just talk about this, hear each other out, and then the three of us will have to come to a factual conclusion that we believe in. So please, just let us continue, so, do you have anything else for Dan to say?
So sheriff, just to clarify this, we brought up the fact that there were three things that Mike had in his opening statement that we saw that were of concern to us. One, the mask mandates, two, the shutting down of the churches, and three, the nonessential businesses. So am I, am I correct in saying that if a mask mandate comes down from the government, that's one issue, versus if a mask mandate comes down from a business? In other words, theoretically, in my opinion, this is my opinion, that if a mask mandate comes down from the government, they have no authority to do that, because it infringes upon the First, First Amendment, as well as the churches, the free right of assembly comes down on the First Amendment. So is that something that you believe in your authority that you could say, we're not going to enforce, if it comes from the government, not from the churches? The churches said it's too dangerous for us to have service, we won't have a service, if the business says it's, if it's too dangerous for you to come into our business and not wear a, and we want you to wear a mask, how do you view those?
I think, again, we would have to look at the whole picture, what's going on, you know, the, back when we had everything shut down back a year ago in March, and our office, our lobby, first time probably in history, was closed for three months. We still handled calls, everybody was real careful, we would have to look at the whole picture. For me to say that I'm not going to do something at this point, I'm not going to say I'm not going to do something, I would have to look at and take a lot of things into account before I would say, making the decision that, you know, I don't feel that it would just be up to me to make that decision, I would have others involved with that, whether county attorney, board of supervisors, if it's in the county, you know, I think it would be more than just me, I'm not going to just make that decision for everybody and, and tell everybody, okay, today we're going to all start wearing masks, or today we're not, because the federal government pulled us, we have to, I think that would be something that would have to be reviewed by more than just man.
Thank you. Kathy?
It's two things, it, it strikes me that what you're basically saying is that you don't need passage of a constitutional entity in order to do your job.
I didn't hear what you said.
I think I heard you say that you really don't need passage of something called constitutional county in order for you to do your job, because you're doing it now, you're protecting your rights, and you will continue to do so. So the need for such a resolution doesn't seem to be there. The, the other point that I would make is that it feels as if we are picking and choosing which laws we agree with or don't agree with. In my opinion, that ultimately results in pandemonium, because we have the law of the land, the Constitution was set up with a balance of powers, and if, if we as citizens can pick and choose which laws we'll follow, that doesn't make sense. If we don't like the law, there are procedures through which we can go in order to get the law changed. But we cannot, as a population of 300 million people, promote the idea of picking and choosing whether we like a law or not.
Well, that was already done by the billions, still rights in the Constitution. So if anything, if anything has created law or mandate that supersedes or violates the Constitution, it's null and void, and he does not have to enforce it.
Yes. All right, all right, I, I want to keep it to a question and answer, and so.
And again, to your reply, Kathy, I'm going to do our job, just as we do every single day, and what the constitutional county does is reinforce to the board to reinforce the, that they're going to assist or support, not that they don't support us already, because I've had great support, it just supports the sheriff's office and other law enforcement, basically. So no, we're not going to change, again, like I said, how we do our job, doesn't change how I can or can't do my job, so, hopefully that answers it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
Yours got a little work. So- Just one quick question, just one quick question, clarification, uh, purling to the tape that we just heard, referred to the fact that the sheriff is a constitutionally-elected official of the people. I'm wondering, do you, Dan, understand, are, these guys are elected officials, are you elected in some different way, or is it constitutionally-elected meaning? I just don't know.
I was elected just like the others are. When you run, you run as a sheriff of, of the county, and you are, when you take oath of office, you uphold the Constitution and people's Bill of Rights, so.
Just wondering how you understood that.
I believe you had one more question.
Okay, so, based on what this lady said about there are other remedies for going about dealing with unconstitutional laws or mandates or regulations, and that, so any federal agency can make a regulation, that doesn't mean it's legal, so there's legal remedies that you can take for that. But for example, I think I heard you say that you would uphold our right to bear arms, and there's legal remedies for that, too, but that could take a long time, and I think you can discern on your own, and have the right to discern on your own, even without consulting the county attorney, that, you will not let that happen in your county. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question, Kathy, what do you mean by certain Second Amendment threats, threatened Second Amendment?
Well, for example, recently, there was a person meeting proposed at the federal level, at the ATF, and he, he made no bones about it, that if, if he was elected, or if he was appointed, he would say that you can't have any semi-automatic rifles, and he made that really clear. They've since withdrawn his name, but if that had happened, then our only legal remedy would be through the courts, but if they, if, if that was a, if that happened, my question was, is the sheriff can discern on his own that he's not going to uphold it? It's the same thing that when Sheriff Matt was faced with the Brady Bill, and it passed in, in 1994, they took it to the Supreme Court, that took a long, long time to get, get there and get it done, but he knew that they didn't have to answer to the federal government, and that decision upheld the sovereignty of the Tenth Amendment and upheld the sovereignty of the, of the power of the county sheriff.
And again, to clarify all of that, the right to bear arms, if people are legally holding at their house, whatever, I have no problem with that. The only time that we would have a problem is if somebody's illegally, say, felon has a whole house full of, of weapons, sure, we're going to go, if we know about it, and there's, whether we got to do a search warrant or what have you, we would have to, and we would enforce that type of thing. So I want you to think that I'm not following any guidelines of the, of the state or anything, but if that would come to that, we would act on the part of safety, that's what this is all about, is people's safety.
Yes.
I'd like to ask the supervisors if, if you agree that the sheriff is the supreme authority in this county, does he supersede your authority?
We each have our own duties set by the Iowa Code.
Right.
Which are totally different ones, but I'm not so sure where those duties cross. I mean, our duties, the supervisors, have nothing to do with the law enforcement end that he has, except we, we work with him on his budget, provide him the funding to do what he needs, but, I mean, each one, each one is different by that, what the Iowa Code expects us and requires us to do with our, you know, oath of office, too, we uphold the, you know, Constitution and the Bill of Rights and all that, so I mean, there's some things, Iowa Code, he probably supersedes us on, on his law enforcement end, but there's some things on the finance end and all that that we supersede him on, so I mean, it's not really a, it's not both doing the same job, he's up here, we're, like, all elected officials, the county attorney, treasurer, recorder, auditor, we're all kind of the same level, but we each have our own duties by the code that we swear that uphold, you know, I don't know if that's an answer or not, but I mean, his, his duties are totally different than my duties. I, I support the sheriff's, I support every office without, throughout the county, I mean, there's times we disagree, sometimes there's a little disagreements over budgets, but once we set a budget for a department for Dan, or any of the other elected official, we set that bottom line. If, if a certain office wants to hire three more people, we have no yes or no say in it, if she can stay within her budget and accomplish her duties by the code, that, that is where our responsibility, our control of that ends. We don't tell them that she can't have three deputies or, you know, but if she's short on funding, then she has to justify it to us to make an amendment or, or change the budget, so.
To add to that, his powers are given to him by the Constitution, and he takes orders in front of the people who elected him, or Bremer County. Yeah.
I don't know what that means, he doesn't hold a level of sight where we get together and say, we'd like you to do this, Sheriff Pickett.
You elected him.
Yeah, right.
He enforced the law. Yeah.
Absolute constitutional law.
Exactly.
If somebody does like the job I do or Dan, four years from now, or I'm up a year from now, they, they will remember that, and that's, that's where the checks and balances fall in control, but, I mean, I, you're not going to please everybody, you, and I've always said I go into a medium with an open mind, and I, how can I make a decision until I hear all the information? And it takes, sometimes it takes a little while to process, you know, some, some brains work faster than others, mine, but I want to make sure I make the right decision. But that, that was my experience.
If the federal government passed the law that they were not going to have any, couldn't have any semi-automatic weapons, and they sent the ATF to your county to start confiscating automatic weapons?
Semi-automatic.
Do you, do you have the ability to interpose between the ATF and the citizens of your county? Are you aware that you have the ability?
I wasn't even aware of that, I guess, but I'm assuming that I would have the ability, but again, we would have to look at the whole picture, too. I mean, I don't, I think there's certain needs for certain weapons, but then are there needs for, you know, and that's where we're having some discrepancies, where school shootings and things like that, that people are getting a hold of these things that maybe shouldn't have them, and I guess we'd have to look at the whole picture when that.
I'm talking about law-abiding citizen, I'm not talking about somebody going into a school and shooting things up, I mean, that's common sense.
First of all, I'd have to find out that you, say you had one, if they passed something, I guess, if the ATF went in, they would probably be going in by themselves.
I think the real question, and how I would answer your question, is he has absolutely certain authority to enforce the law. I do, don't have one bit of that authority as a county supervisor. I recognize that and respect that, simple as that.
Yes, Mr. Joe, I'd just like to make one statement here, and it's just a statement, but, you know, I think as every day goes by, we're seeing, and the reason we're here for more the constitutional county concept, is we see every day more and more abuses, we saw some abuses last year. You know, the sheriff may not agree that these are abuses, that the state makes a mask mandate that he can, like, not from- You know, the Sheriff may not agree that these are abuses, that the state makes a mass mandate that he can, like, not enforce it or enforce it. But at the same time, what's recently happened, we have a, we've had a statement made that any company over a hundred people has to have a shot mandate. Is there going to become a point that everybody's going to have to have a shot? So these are abuses, that's why we're here, is to try to prevent those abuses. We have our rights, and I'm not going to take a shot, period. So, I would, and I'll acknowledge you're not my County Sheriff, but I would put my County Sheriff on notice that if somebody wanted to come give me a shot, ain't going to happen. So that's why we're here, just to simply try to have these rights that we have, a statement from this county that we're going to back up our Sheriff in whatever he does, because he is the final law enforcement authority, and that's all this is, is that we're going to have your back. I ran a business for thirty-six years, it's lonely at the top, Sheriff. And somebody can cover for you and help back you up, get your shirt, help pick your job up.
So while I think you're dead wrong about your desire to take the shot or not, I think you ought to take the shot, because then that's up to you. My position is, is you do have that absolute right to not take the shot. So, and where I become very passionate about this, I do have a few questions for you, too, Mike. I'd like to say this, though, because something got so misunderstood and so frustrated me so significantly. Thank you, Sheriff, I think you need to be on the hot seat. I know this statement's going to make you the hot seat, but I want to give a real example of where, how many people have permits to carry in Breamer County? Twenty-seven hundred?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven hundred people, twenty-six hundred people, lost their right in Breamer County, as they did in a lot of other counties in the state, about three years ago, when a Supreme Court judge put out an order, said that you can't carry a weapon in a courthouse. That is so wrong. There's not a judge in the world that should have that right to do that. If the Code doesn't say you can't carry it in there, then how can, how can a judge make a law? That's what's frustrating to me as a citizen, is that we have people making law, and people jump on board with those, and that happened in Breamer County. There was twenty-five, thirty people there that kind of shoved my support for, we had the ability to write a rule to counter that and allow it to happen in Breamer County. But we had twenty-five, thirty citizens come and say, no, we don't want you to do that. We didn't even entertain the rights of the twenty-seven hundred people that said, they went through the courses, they had the right to carry. Do I want guns in the courthouse? No, I absolutely don't want guns. But then make it a law. Don't say that one judge has the authority to take that right away from people. That's what's frustrating to me. So, my question to you, Mike, you've said to us two or three times that two counties in Arizona passed the Constitutional County.
Nevada.
In Nevada, okay.
And one in New York State.
What benefits have those counties seen? And what benefits have the citizens of that county seen by the county taking that action?
I think what you're seeing, Mr. Hill, is that you have the intrusion, the rights taken away from the people, from the federal government coming down, you know, everything that we've discussed here. People are getting scared, they're worried about this. It's no different than when Sheriff Mack went to Arlington. Said we had two-hundred-and-sixty-four people there worried about their rights. Are they being infringed on? And the federal government, and I will bring this up, just in the last two weeks, the IRS and the federal government is now basically saying that they want to do a six-hundred-dollar report on your deposits and withdrawals. I think that's an infringement on my rights. I don't need the IRS hiring another fifty thousand people to come in and ask us, what are we doing with my money? That's none of their business, as long as I'm legal and doing the right thing. I don't need the federal government, and that's why people are, each county, and we've got ninety-nine counties, the United States of America has a Constitution, the states have a Constitution, except we don't have the Second Amendment attached to it. All we're asking, Mr. Hill, is to make the Constitution and the Bill of Rights the principles, not law.
So, in those Nevada counties, has there been a difference? Has there been a change?
It sends a message to the people, and Gary might want to expand on this, but I think it sends a message that the Commissioners there are going to stand behind the Bill of Rights to the people, and we're not going to take the infringements from the federal government.
Well, I think everybody in the room knows that I'm going to do that, whether we're a constitutional county or not. So, that's why I'm asking, what, how have we seen something change, or has it changed?
Gary? You know, I think, and I'm trying to really do this from an unbiased perspective. I'm not going to tell you, sit here, because I haven't talked to any of the citizens of Nevada counties. I did talk to the one Commissioner, and had a Zoom meeting, which we gave you a thumb drive of, about why they did this, what were some of the pitfalls, what were some of the concerns that they had about it. But to answer the question about what are the citizens seeing, I don't think they have seen any difference, other than because right now, most of these mandates that were on during the past year have gone away. But what I think it did is it says that, okay, we had our rights infringed upon by the state government last year, we had our rights infringed upon by the federal government last year. We are the basic lowest level of government. We're going to ensure that doesn't happen again, because, just like you said, Sheriff, you know, we had all this come back last year. Initially, I thought first, you know, mask would maybe be okay or whatever, but then got to studying it more and studying it more, and it's the fact that the government has no right to do that, period. Period. So, in essence, I can't tell you, Sheriff, or Mr. Hill, that the citizens have seen any difference. I think what they may see is that the county at the lowest level of government, and their Sheriff has said, we're not going to let this happen again, and even rest assured, it's not going to happen again. That's the only thing I can say that they may see from it, but any verbal feedback, Mr. Hill, I can't say it, I burden you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a question about his example, just to see if he can clarify it, could I do that? So we can not confide in another county.
Sure.
Well, here's my question to you, the regulation that you talked about, that they can look at bank accounts over six-hundred. Now, that's a regulation that, there's legislation that indicates what power they have, and actually, that rule would be related to whether they thought that was a significant, a productive thing to do, to enforce the tax laws. Now, if you disagree, you know, with that regulation, that, it's subject to litigation. You can go to court, you can go in, you're involved in the regulatory process and have input on that. No, but are you saying that if that happened in one of the counties where it's a constitutional county, that then it would be the Sheriff that could say, I'm not going to allow them to have access to those...
I'm just asking a question.
Mr. Hill, can I answer that?
That's why I asked.
Sheriff can't do anything about that, because it's just like, right now, all of our emails, all of our texts, all of our stuff is being recorded by the NSA. Sheriff can't do anything about that. He can't do anything about the fact that they made passes, but it's, again, he's just simply bringing out, here's another potential infringement, if it is passed, it's just being proposed. It's just another potential infringement. He can't stop that, you know, because he maybe could, depending on the situation. If a bank said, no, we're not going to do that, and the feds came in and raided that bank, then maybe he could do something about it, I don't know. But so, it's a really gray area, in my opinion.
Well, I thought the proposition that you're stating is that the Sheriff has that kind of authority, that he stands above the feds and their regulations, and the state and their regulations. He decides it's an illegal order, he has authority. Now, are you not saying that?
The thing Breamer County does.
That's what I'm saying, that that, would that be a benefit in those counties to have this, that their Sheriff would be able to do that? Ours wouldn't if we're not in that county. Is that the way it works?
Ask the Sheriff.
Kathy, go ahead, with your question.
I haven't, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dan, you answer that first.
I have no idea. I would, can't believe that I would have authority, like Gary was saying, to tell somebody that, I mean, if this is something passed, like you're saying, Steve, you would have a way, if you don't agree with it, to, you know, contest it, I guess. For me to, you know, there's no way I could control all of that, that I'm aware of, and nor would I. I think this is something that has got to be done through the voting process. So if you have people that are voting for these things and you don't like it, just like we said earlier, if they're elected and they're voting for things like this, maybe the next time when they're up for election, some of that needs to be addressed. And just like for me, you know, if I'm running another term, and you guys don't like something I'm doing, that's why you have that process.
Mike, is this proposed legislation, or is it proposed rule? Okay, big difference there, we all know that, sitting in this room. There's a big difference between a federal agency writing a rule and the federal government making a law. If the federal government makes a law, then he's going to have to enforce that law. But if it's a rule...
It's unconstitutional.
It's unconstitutional, so there you go.
No, 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 no.
If a law is unconstitutional...
Federal agencies don't carte blanche have the right to make rules, Steve. You know that as well as I do. They have to be given that authority by the Code as well.
The rules are made pursuant to the authority in the law.
The law is law, so that's why they're going to have to write a law.
They operate as law.
Right, they're going to have, but they're going to have to write a law. They can't propose a rule and then do it.
The rule is the law.
I think that's part of that new law they're trying to pass with the infrastructure.
Well, then, that's on us to watch the law come through. That's on us to talk to our legislators and get it to not pass it.
But there is a law that is unjust and unconstitutional, he does not have to enforce it. He's expected, no, he doesn't. If it's unconstitutional, nope, null and void.
I think we need to clarify the difference between legally and unconstitutional.
She's trying to ask a question for several minutes.
I called on her.
It's all right, it's all right.
She yielded, so Kathy, please, ask her question.
Well, first of all, this is not a question, it's a feeling, it's just a comment, not really debatable. It's just kind of an emotional thing for me. But it just seems to me that we've become so individualistic about my right, what I want, my this, my that, we forgot about the common good. I wish we could go back to nineteen eighteen, talk to the citizens during the Spanish Flu, they went around and wore their masks every day for the common good. What went wrong? Because now, all it is, is what I want and my rights. I wear my mask just not just to protect me, I wear it to protect those who are around me that might not be vaccinated. I don't want them to get sick. When did we stop caring about the five to eleven-year-olds in school, on whether they get sick or not? It just bothers me that we are going down this road of my rights are more important than anybody else's.
I think it's interpretation, Kathy. I think that whatever side you're looking at it from is how you're interpreting it.
That's what I've seen.
Well, similar, that's what's happening now. In nineteen eighteen, there was pictures produced of the upper, the elites in San Francisco at a dinner party, and no one had masks on at that dinner party. That picture was leaked in a newspaper. That's when everybody started to understand what really was happening. Double standards, what's good for you isn't good for me. So, when you're talking about what's going on as far as the good of all people, it's we, the people. We want everyone's rights protected, everyone. We don't care what side you're on, this is not political. But that's what happened, and it's exactly what happened right now, in the pictures you're seeing, with the elites and the people in government without their masks on, when they don't think they're being photographed. It's exactly what's happening.
On both sides of the aisle.
Yes, that's right. I'm not saying it's not on both sides.
Mike, is...
So that's the answer to your question, why we don't trust it.
If passing constitutional law, would that in any way bypass enforcement of the Constitution?
No, it's just, it's putting a layer, it's the federal government, the state government, all we're doing is putting that into our government. It's just simple, just plain simple, we're going to abide by the principles of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, not constitutional law.
So what would we be afraid of?
I shouldn't be afraid of anything.
How would Breamer County be looked at as worse off or better off, if we pass it or don't pass it? Hi, Debbie.
Hi, I'm Debbie Baker.
Take your mask.
For one thing, all right, I feel like we've heard our Sheriff say that he's going to do his job, so I get the impression that you don't feel like there's a requirement for another layer of authority for you to do your job? Would you say that's correct?
I'm saying I support the concept. I'm saying that regardless, if this other layer takes place or not, we're going to continue to do our job the same way we've done it each and every day. And I think what this does is just reinforces that the Board passes a resolution. And again, it's not going to change how I do my job, if it passes today or passes three weeks from now, how I'm going to do my job. I'm not going to change our methods, I'm not going to change our status of everything. We're still going to protect those that elected me, and everybody that's out there in our county. You know, when we get a call for service, we don't ask, are you this, are you this, are you this? We ask, what's the problem? Where do we need to go? Where do we need to help people? And that's what it's still going to be, even when we leave here today, I don't care. I know I've been kind of like directed a lot of different things, and I totally respect the fact that you're asking these questions. But when we leave here today, I'm not going to be any, handle things any different than what I have in the past, just so everybody understands that.
In regards to that, my concern would be in the documents that support this constitutional county, there's a whole bunch of other things that we haven't even talked about. The suggestion that we should eliminate electronic voting machines, suggestion that we should, you know, start over on our school systems. There's a whole slew of things in the supporting documents on the website that I feel like, you know, we're, we could be pretty naive about, and we should be concerned about.
I respect that, I don't know all those details, it wouldn't affect what I'm doing, I guess.
It could.
Well, I mean, okay.
Yeah, so I just feel like...
A lot of those ideas, though, come from both sides of the political aisle.
It's going to have to be...
Well, no, I'm saying the documents.
A lot of them do. Do we have another question? Just so we know, we have an agenda, and this agenda is going to, or this item is going to have to be wrapped up at nine fifty-five, so we can get into our next agenda questions?
As somebody who came from a place that was as good as Iowa with all the rights that we enjoy, and saw it overturned very quickly, the constitutional county, I believe, is necessary, because you wonderful people aren't always going to be here, okay? Things can change, and a Sheriff who isn't willing to uphold the constitutional rights of the citizens isn't always going to be there. There's a chance that that could change. Constitutional government or county will ensure that future sheriffs, boards of supervisors and whatnot will have to adhere to the Constitution, and will not be able to overstep our rights with mandates and instead of laws and constitutional procedures.
That would be incumbent on you keeping who you define as the good electorate.
That's true, that's true, but that can change in the middle. We saw mandates change things very quickly.
I'd be curious, it sounds like three counties have approved this, how many have rejected it? And why did they reject it? It seems like a minority of counties have actually accepted this proposal. Three counties in the whole United States?
Have a response for that?
Yeah, we've had, we proposed it to five counties here in Iowa, and so far, none of them have accepted it. With that being said, these counties in Nevada and New York didn't have their people like us proposing it. They had their Supervisors, they had the foresight to say this is needed, and they did it on their own accord.
Question?
I just have a question for the Sheriff. You know, a lot of issues have come up today, that it seems to me like your plate is pretty full the way it is. Are we going to just say, every issue that comes up, the Sheriff is going to have to make a determination whether it's constitutional or not? And the other question is, clearly, it depends on who the elected person is in that office that makes that determination. So, it suggests to me that it... So it suggests to me that it, it has some elements to it that would be extremely difficult to manage i- in any kind of practical sense, just from an administrative point of view.
I understand what you're saying. Given that, it still would be, every little thing that we're, we've had a lot of discussion between masks and guns and you name it today, it still would, if it was something that I had to make a decision, a lot of the stuff, I don't feel one person should be able to make that decision. That's just me. If I make a decision on one of my deputies, that is my decision, but to make rule or whatever to every citizen in this county, I don't feel that that is right, I mean, just for me. I think that obviously, whatever would happen, I would have other people involved in that. I'm not going to make every decision that, like you said, every time something comes up, I'm not going to be sitting here making a decision for every Breamer County citizen. I just wouldn't have the time for that.
One, one more quick clarification, if you wouldn't mind. I want to make sure that I understand the concept that your authority as a sheriff would exceed that of the courts.
You decide what's lawful and what's unlawful, based on what I've heard, within our county. Is that, is that true?
It violates the consequences.
So he decides if it violates or not, or if it's unlawful, as opposed to the courts?
He is the highest, the brain, highest law abuser in Breamer County.
Okay, so he would, his authority would exceed that of the courts?
In Breamer County.
In Breamer County. Okay, that's, that's where this would change a whole lot of things. Not, you know, we can't just say, oh, it's not really going to change anything.
It's already established, this is the way that it is. We're just highlighting the Constitution because it's being forgotten and lost.
You know, one of the things I think we're missing here is that, and I took the same oath when I went in the military, uphold and defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. So that gives that, that, that person that took that oath, and that oath was taken years ago, was taken on a Bible, because if you took that oath in front of God and you didn't uphold that oath, things didn't set well, set well with you when your time came before God. And the point being on this whole thing is that, so if you take and uphold that oath to defend the Constitution, that means you should be aware of what the Constitution says, and that I have the right to determine if that is a, within the Constitution or if it's without the Constitution.
Tim?
I have a couple of questions. I know you're from Clayton County. I know Mike, he's a playful boy who lives in L.A. What county are you from?
Fayette.
Fayette. So where do both your counties' supervisors stand on this?
Like, we just presented it to ours last week.
To the sheriff.
To the sheriff. And he is very, very interested, and he is a constitutional sheriff. And he's going to visit with his supervisors and his county attorney over this matter and get back to us within a couple of weeks. He's very supportive.
I was curious, where?
In, in Fayette County, I presented one of the, as one of the first counties, and our lead supervisor, Janine Tellen, is for it. The other two supervisors at this point in time are not for it. She was on that Zoom call with the supervisor from, commissioner from Nevada County when we had that hour and twenty-minute Zoom call. And, and our sheriff, I talked to him personally about it. I believe he's very supportive of the concept. I'm not going to say he's going to stand up and say, yeah, I want you to pass this, but I think he's very, very supportive of it. I had a good long conversation with him, and I believe he's very supportive of it.
I, I guess I got one more, I'll be for these guys, or Casey, or some of the other guys with the legal background. If we would, if we would, I, I like things short and simple, so I don't like going through pages of stuff to figure out what I read in the last page. If, if a resolution has a simple thing that supervisor of Breamer County, you know, uphold the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, how is that any different than all these other pages? I mean, to me, that, that says black and white in about one sentence. I, I guess without all the other, I guess, I, I guess I, I'm fair, I support the Bill of Rights and the Constitution, but I don't know if I need pages and pages of stuff to bring off what's on.
What do you need a resolution for at all?
I actually support the concept. I've said it before, and I, I, so, Mike, you have the floor to wrap it up in a couple of minutes, because we're done.
Yeah. I, I will say this, Tim, you guys do resolutions all the time. All this is doing is taking it down to one more level to our county.
Some of our resolutions get awful word about.
I'm just saying, this is not wordy. There's a resolution.
You can choose that word.
There's a resolution that came from Alco County. We put together a sample, only a sample, that you could go by. You can do your own thing. In the finish up, I had fifteen questions here from the previous meeting. Apparently, I'm not going to get through that, that's okay, but I would like to close with a statement, if that's okay.
Please.
There's a cost to having liberty and freedom, but it also costs to maintain liberty and freedom in the United States of America. Can you imagine how our civil rights would have been today if we would have had sheriffs back then that understood and swore duty, uphold the oath, and the principles of the Bill of Rights and the Constitution of we, the people? The incident with Rosa Parks from Montgomery, Alabama, who refused to give up her seat back on December first, nineteen-fifty-five, should have never happened. She had the courage to step out of her comfort zone, because she knew her constitutional rights had been violated. Rosa Parks was definitely a leader, a person of peaceful non-compliance. So the question to all the last hundred years, instead of tearing it down, if we'd have been teaching the principles of the Bill of Rights and the Constitution properly for the last hundred years in our grade schools, high schools, colleges, we wouldn't have the questions you'd ask. We wouldn't be where we are today, and I wouldn't be here talking to you today. We, the people, must remember where our rights come from, and that is, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights. Today, we are being taught the inverted hierarchy, where government seems to be controlling every aspect of our rights and freedoms, and that becomes the subjects of the government. Our existence, as I was taught, starts with a hierarchy that God created man, man created society, society created government, not the other way around. We, the people, have the power, we have an obligation, we have the posterity waiting for us to say, we will not comply, so we will be free. Thank God for people like Sheriff Richard Mack and constitutional attorney Kristin Hall, who educates and teaches constitutional principles, not constitutional law. The question to be asked, who is willing to take the first step to lead, as Rosa Parks did by refusing to give up her seat? The question is, who is willing to stand and make Breamer County a constitutional county, because I, too, will not comply to an unlawful federal government that is undisciplined and out of control, and that includes the states and even our local government? When it comes to destruction of principles of the Bill of Rights and the United States Constitution, we're we, the people, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody would like to pick up any brochures, it's here to pick up.
I appreciate everybody keeping it simple. Thank you.